Welcome back to another study session video this time we're doing accounting let's see where's my pen okay here's my pen Hi Perfect For this one I'm going to do the the questions on the homework that were asked to be reviewed by us And then afterwards I'll just go over basic ones Therefore Let us begin First things first What is the question asking us This control copy control paste The transactions listed below are typical of those involving amalgamated textiles and American fashions Amalgamated is a wholesale merchandiser and American fashions is a retail merchandiser Assume all sales of merchandise from amalgamated to American fashions are made with terms N slash sixty comma And the two companies use perpetual inventory systems Assume the following transactions between the two companies occurred in the order listed during the year ended December thirty first Amalgamated sold merchandise to American fashions at a selling price of two hundred thirty thousand dollars The merchandise had cost amalgamated Hundred and seventy five thousand dollars Two days later American fashions returned goods that had been sold to the company at a price of twenty thousand dollars And complained to amalgamated that some of the remaining merchandise Different from what American fashions had ordered amalgamated agreed to give an allowance of five thousand dollars to American fashions The goods returned by American fashions had cost amalgamated fifteen thousand two hundred and seventy dollars No further returns are expected just three days later American fashions paid amalgamated which still settled all amounts owed So the first question is for each whoa shit What happened For each of the events A through C Indicate the amount and direction of the effect Amalgamated textiles in terms of the following items And those items are Sales revenue sales return Sales allowance Net sales Cost of goods sold and gross profit And then to make things easier A B C This is A this is B this is C Another we have this what is the question really asking us to do okay so the question here is asking us the very simple thing To just make a table If you did If you're with me for my other accounting classes Then you'll know how this works so first transaction Ah feels good to have a pen again It'll be A B C And then it'll be sales revenue Sales return Sales allowance Net sales Cost of goods sold And gross profit Okay So what exactly does this mean well first we need to start with all of the transactions And to do so we're gonna be using Our handy dandy ability to do mathematics Step one we look at our notes again look at the what the notepad It's giving us a two hundred thirty K and a hundred seventy five K cost amalgamated hundred seventy five K And selling prices two hundred thirty K so For the sake of simplicity we'll have different numbers for A it's gonna be green Different colors for A it's going to be green sales revenue is two hundred And thirty thousand And sales revenue in this case will equal net sales two hundred and thirty thousand this is just something you have to know It's not something that's told to you and then for cost of goods sold it's going to be a hundred and seventy five thousand So for gross profit we have to take net sales minus cost of goods sold therefore it's gonna be two hundred and fifty thousand Minus hundred and seventy five thousand and that's going to equal fifty five thousand Cool Very cool indeed Then we have to look at B We'll use orange here Two days later American fashions returned goods that had been sold to the company at a price of twenty thousand and complained to amalgamated That some of the remaining merchandise different from what American fashions had ordered amalgamated agreed to give an allowance of five thousand dollars to American fashions The good return by American fashions had cost amalgamated fifteen thousand two hundred and seventy dollars no further returns are expected So first of all you have sales return just twenty thousand And then our sales allowance is five thousand Furthermore For net sales we'll take so to do net sales It's going to be Negative open parentheses Sales return Minus Sales allowance Therefore It's going to be negative twenty five K I know that It's been awhile so please be with me here so it'd be negative Two five K I apparently Cannot write five right now Perfect And now that we've written that we can get cost of goods sold And for the sake of simplicity cost of goods sold was given to us by the problem it costed fifteen thousand two hundred and seventy dollars So it'll be Fifteen Point two seven K It's a big point here And then to get the gross profit we'll take Uh net sales Minus cost Of goods sold I also want to point out that because the cost of goods sold was for Amalgamated oops Cost of goods sold was for amalgamated and not American fashions it's negative Okay it's negative because it's for amalgamated and not American fashions Therefore we're going to have negative twenty five K minus negative Fifteen point two seven K And this is going to equal Negative nine point seven three K And that is going to be written with parentheses instead because this is accounting So in reality it'll be parentheses nine point seven three K And then for C Why do I keep doing that For just three days later American fashions paid amalgamated which settled all accounts owed so the thing about that Is that C is actually a trick there is nothing to put in C because C doesn't tell you to do anything Everything's already been paid so why are we recording It's already been recorded So now let's do part two of the problem Part two of the problem states the following Prepare the journal entries that amalgamated textiles would record tip when using a perpetual inventory system The seller always makes two journal entries when goods are sold Therefore Let's take a look Amalgamated sold merchandise to American fashions at two hundred and thirty K and merchandise cost amalgamated a hundred seventy five K Therefore For our little transaction So for A It's going to be debit To Accounts receivable And that's going to be two hundred and thirty K And then it'll be credit For sales revenue And this is going to be two hundred and thirty K And then for B I have to be what am I doing because it's always two because we're selling it'll be debit It'll be cost of goods sold and that'll be a hundred and seventy five thousand dollars and then we'll credit Our inventory And we're crediting inventory because that's what we're crediting That's what we're losing we're losing that asset so it's a hundred and seventy five K Now let's look at B B would be here two days later American fashions returned goods that had been sold to the company at a price of twenty thousand dollars And complained to amalgamated that some of the remaining merchandise different from what American fashions had ordered Amalgamated agreed to give an allowance of five thousand dollars to American fashions the goods returned by American fashions had cost amalgamated Fifteen thousand two hundred and seventy dollars no further returns are expected Therefore it's asking us for The following Debit It'll be sales Return And allowance For Twenty five thousand dollars I don't know when I write five I just wanna write K instead it's weird And this twenty five where does it come from so the twenty five comes from the twenty thousand Plus The five thousand here And that's going to give you twenty five K Twenty five K Pretty simple And then we credit We're crediting accounts receivable And that'll also be twenty five K And then because we are doing a transaction there's two there's two more that go through So we'll debit Our inventory For fifteen thousand Two hundred and seventy Dollars And we will credit Our cost of goods sold For fifteen thousand two hundred and seventy dollars Seventy thousand perfect And now we have to look at C while it's tempting to just say because we didn't do anything in the previous one there's nothing for C that's not entirely true In this case C is just three days later American fashions paid amalgamated which settled all the amounts owed To do that We need to actually think about what's owed here We know That our accounts receivable For A Was Two hundred and thirty thousand dollars And then we know that for B our accounts receivable which in this case was a credit And up here was debit But this was twenty five Thousand dollars Therefore debit and credit it's gonna subtract we have for C Uh debit To increase cash At Two hundred and five thousand And we're crediting Accounts receivable For two hundred and five thousand So just so you know the two hundred and five thousand comes from two hundred and thirty K minus twenty five K And that's how you'll do the journal entries Let me just check for the ones And the answer is now we go to chapter five And chapter five is going to be a lot nicer to us first we have to do five dash three And five dash eight So in this one We have to look for here Keep doing that on accident here's what we're looking at We have to take A list of Things to do And then we have to pick which internal control principle is going to take hold here So one office employees Let me just remove This bottom one cuz it has the answer on it and that's not good I would show everything but truthfully as long as you know how to do this it's pretty basic so A So one will be office employee places all merchandise orders that would be For one Establish Responsibility Pretty simple what about two Goods are received only by warehouse employees that's segregate duties Okay so establish responsibility is you tell what you need to tell the office employee what is their job In this case that office employee is to place merchandise orders in the case of the second one the goods are received by only warehouse employees that's segregated duty so the When you segregate duties you have custody You will have authorization And then you will have custody authorization and recording In this case segregate duties for custody because the warehouse the warehouse employees are getting custody of the goods Okay guys read your textbook it'll tell you all about this Three The warehouse is oh Locked and activities are electronically monitored so what that is is restricting access Then we're gonna go to four Which states merchandise orders are recorded on a computer order form that is a document procedure This should be an E Yeah I know Document procedure Five And five is receiving reports are completed to indicate goods once more that is a document Procedure Then six Is goods billed by suppliers are compared to purchase orders and receiving reports before being paid This is independent Lee Verify That is how you will select the internal control principle represented by each point Pretty basic But I think it has to be because otherwise we'd never finish Then we have to do very basic organization And let's read about it Control copy control paste select whether the following items would be added plus or subtracted minus from the company books Or the bank statement side of a bank reconciliation and the following items are These I don't even have TikTok I don't know why I showed that Apparently my Ability to copy and paste is terrible I really wish that I had this better formatted Because if I did this would be so much faster but sometimes you make this on a crutch okay I was planning on doing this way earlier in the day But circumstances changed So we look at A outstanding checks of twelve thousand dollars so what they're actually asking us to do Is the following they're asking us to look at a reconciliating item Reconc Creating Item And then it's asking us for bank Statement Or company books And in which direction so for A It's outstanding checks of twelve thousand dollars so an outstanding check goes to your bank statement And it's a minus on the chat on the bank statement B B is bank service charge of fifteen dollars that means that your bank is charging your company books so it goes minus here C C will be Deposit in transit of Twenty three hundred dollars so deposit in transit means that it's going to affect the bank cuz it's already recorded on the books And given you're giving money to the bank it's positive And then D Interest earned of five dollars so that means that when you earn interest so let's say we get cash and then Interest Receivable I guess This will be five and this will be five That means that your company gets the cash positive Okay get good at journal entries and everything else becomes easy Pretty pretty nice Okay super sincere and I figured I might as well show this thing off so just a quick note on bank What happened Quick note on bank It's about your Bank May Not know Versus You May not know So let's explain this so some things your bank might not know would be errors Made by bank Which is kinda scummy if you think about it and then other words would be time lag Time lag includes Uh recent deposits And B Recent Written That's an E Checks As for what you may not know This will include Interest In your Bank account It also includes electronic fund transfers It conclude service Taken Out of your account It could include Customer Checks You deposited For which The customer Did not Have sufficient Funds So NSF And Self errors So if you if you understand bank reconciliation like this which is a bit more wordy but if you understand it this is even easier And just to let you know how internal control works to make things even simpler So internal control components Include control environment Risk assessment Control activities Information and communication Along with monitoring Activities Pretty cool pretty cool I like to say so myself And this is the components of internal control So now we have to do another question Four dash five And it's gonna be another very simple very basic Question And that is adjusting journal entries oh my god I don't usually say that on this channel But I'm going to because this This right here is going to make or break your exam if you can get this down you've guaranteed yourself a lot of points Copy paste Woohoo House of tutors incorporated is a company that runs a tutoring service for high school and university students The company record reported the following amounts in its post closing trial balance prepared at the end of the physical year at August thirty first Here it is the company encountered the following events during September And for the sake of everyone's sanity I'm going to be separating these By component That way It'll be easier to tell what's going on okay what is going on why is this not working Okay And I gotta admit this is why I was so hesitant to make a video on this one because the process of getting this right Is not luck based because that's disrespectful there is a skill to this there is a huge skill to this however Learning it is only really possible if you've done this over and over again And what they want us to do is prepare journal entries And adjusted journal entries For all of these events So let's start with the first one HTI provided hundred hours of regular hourly tutoring at a rate of twenty hour all of which was collected in cash So we know Basic stuff right twenty times a hundred equals two thousand Pretty basic Two thousand dollars an hour So What it's asking us to do is to say that it's collected in cash and then this is a service because the tutoring is a service so for A It's going to be cash And this is a debit versus credit That was bad You know what let's just write it the way we were writing earlier so debit To cash For two thousand dollars And then credit And then credit service revenue. That was bad. Okay, we gotta write properly, why can't I erase this, okay, there we go. Service revenue and it'll be two thousand. Then for this one, it's gonna be HTI paid tutors an hourly rate of ten dollars per hour on seven, on September eight. Okay, so we know that ten dollars an hour for a hundred hours. You see where I'm getting it, ten times a hundred is equal to a thousand. Yes. Equal to a thousand. What happened? Okay. Wait a minute, yeah. October twenty. HTI had paid for ninety hours of tutor, okay, so this is one section. Of tutor time and promised to pay the remaining hours worked. Tip total hour expense in B should match total hour of revenue in A. So for those of you who figured that out. The way it works is as followed. First, we know that they're making ten an hour. And we know that they're working a hundred hours, so this will give us a thousand dollars. So let's start this off. It'll be debit salaries and wages. Uh expense. Because we're paying from the company's perspective and this will be a thousand dollars. And then for credit, we're gonna be crediting in cash. However, it said that they only paid for ninety hours of tutor time. Ninety hours, ten times ninety is only nine hundred. Therefore, something's missing, we have to make sure that everything balances out after all this is accounting. So where does this extra hundred go? Well, you see, this goes into credit salaries and wages payable. Because it have not yet been paid. If they were, this would already be paid, that's why you add this section here. And just to let everyone know, for the sake of proving that my math is right, one thousand equals a hundred plus nine hundred. True. I know, I know, jokes aside, this looks simple, but believe me, this is gonna make or break your grade. HTI hosted an all-night review session on September twenty ninth for people cramming for midterm exams, haha. At a special price for ten dollars per attendee. Rather than collect cash at a time of the revenue of review session, HTI will send bills in October to the seventy-five people who attended on the review session. Okay, so what do we know? Always ask yourself what we know, we know. Seventy-five people attended and we know that it was for ten dollars per person. Therefore, we know that a total of seven hundred and fifty dollars should have been something. And that's something is they will send bills and if you're sending a bill, you're sending it for an account. Therefore, we will debit. And it'll be accounts receivable. Let me just do this in a, with more space. Because otherwise you don't have enough space. So it'll be debit accounts receivable. And it'll be credit. It'll service revenue. The reason we're crediting service revenue is because it's already been given. I apparently need more practice with this stylus. And if you're wondering why I'm writing it like this, so like a hundred, you know, say sixty and then over here sixty. That's because in an accounting sheet, it'll be debit is on the left and credit is on the right. Okay, this is accounting one stuff, if you've taken any accounting course, you'll know that, but in case you just stumbled on this video, welcome. Nice to have you here. Next one will be at the beginning of the night-long review session, HTI paid two hundred dollars cash to its tutor for wages. No additional salaries and wages were paid for the review session. Okay. So what do we know? So this is D. We know that something has to be debited. And we know that something is credited. How much? It is two hundred dollars cash for tutors for wages. So this is cash. And debit wages. Cash and it'll be two hundred dollars. Okay, so this is correct, this is a wages expense. Because the company is taking up the expense. And your textbooks will have this as salaries. And wages expense. But if you don't want to write that, just put wages expense, you'll get full credit. Not if it's multiple choice, multiple choice, put salaries and wages expense. So now we gotta go to E. So what is E? HTI collected two hundred cash from a student who received tutoring during the summer. So they already received it, okay, they already received it, therefore. What do we know? We know in E's case, we are going to debit cash because we're receiving cash and it'll be, how much was it? It'll be two hundred. And then we will credit service revenue. No, that's wrong, that's wrong. Accounts receivable. And this will be two hundred. The reason it's accounts receivable is because this two hundred in cash will be going to us. And the service has already been report, uh performed, therefore there's no need to record it twice. That's why it's accounts receivable. So the next letter is F. HTI also collected two hundred fifty cash from a high school for a tutoring session to be held, okay. So the phrase to be held means that it has not happened yet. And this is where we need to learn the difference between deferred and accrued, deferred versus accrued. Uh, so deferred means cash now. And accrued means cash later. Therefore, for F's case, we're going to debit to increase cash because we just got the cash and said cash is two hundred and fifty dollars. And then we are going to credit deferred revenue. That is not how you spell that. And as such, this deferred revenue will be two hundred and fifty dollars. Congratulations. Now we gotta go to G. HTI determined that depreciation for September should be a hundred dollars. Therefore, what do we know, it's gonna be debit one and the credit two. That'll be a hundred dollars on both sides. And we know that this is a loss, therefore up here is an expense depreciation expense. And then here, what's being depreciated, our inventory. Wait. This isn't F, this is G, that's what's going on. Yeah, depreciation expense. Which means that we messed up, well, I messed up. It's not inventory here. If you have a depreciation expense, then guess what you have? Pay, uh, not depreciation, it's accumulated depreciation. Okay, this is why it's always important to think it through. Even if you think you have it right the first time, read your answer again. And if your answer doesn't make sense, figure out why. And if you figure out why, you can get the real answer. If you have depreciation expense, that would mean that you're taking up an accumulated depreciation because depreciation happens over time. So let's say we have our inventory and it's worth a hundred dollars. And suddenly, our inventory is worth twenty dollars. That means that the total accumulated depreciation is eighty dollars. And debit to depreciation expense, so we're losing eighty and the credit accumulated depreciation, depreciation, that's eighty dollars. Okay. You need to make sure not to make these mistakes because if you do this in an accounting field and you get this wrong and you maybe unintentionally mis-inform people of how this works, boom, you lose your, you lose your livelihood and you spend two years in prison. Although HTI adjusted its accounts on August thirty first, it has not yet paid the forty dollar monthly interest owed on the promissory note for either August or September, this note is due in three years, okay. So this is an interest, interest owed. Therefore, we're gonna be debiting and crediting something. And we know that it's a forty dollar loan. Therefore, and it's an interest-based thing and since we're losing money, it's interest expense. And we have to pay it anyways, it was interest payable. Does that make sense? I hope so because it's on your exam, you better know it. Okay, up next is I. So what is I? HD has only forty dollars left of supplies left at September thirtieth. So we know that a supplies originally were a hundred at the start, so by the end we only have forty. Therefore, we need to do this quick calculation. A hundred minus forty is equal to sixty. Now that we know this, what are we debiting? And what are we crediting? Why do I do that? Credit. So we know that we're debiting sixty and we're crediting sixty. Well, what we're doing is a supplies expense. And what is this expense for exactly? Well, supplies. Very simple. And now for the final one, J. What does J tell us? HTI's income taxes are approximately thirty percent of income before taxes. Okay, so this one is interesting. Because it assumes that you have everything in front of you and as you can tell, I've been erasing as we've been going along. Thankfully, I did this problem earlier on a piece of paper, so what you're going to do is take work and expenses. So the work will be all of your revenue. So in A we had service revenue equaling to two thousand. We had in C, another service revenue equaling seven fifty. After that, we add them together and we get two thousand seven hundred and fifty. Then for expenses. And you'll do this, if you, if you, if you're writing them down, you'll be able to see on your on your big list that you probably have from top to bottom, you can do the addition here. So for expenses, we're just looking for expenses, so we know salaries and wage expense in B is equal to a thousand dollars. Then we know for a fact that we have in D a wage expense which is equal to seven hundred and fifty dollars. And then wait, the wage expense is two hundred dollars, my apologies. After that, we have in G, our depreciation expense is equal to a hundred dollars. Afterwards, we have our interest expense for H equaling forty dollars. And then finally in I, our supply expense is equal to sixty dollars. If you take the sum of all of these, you get fourteen hundred. Okay, now I promise we're getting somewhere because this came out of left field and it took forever. So we need to calculate our income tax, which is thirty percent of your income, obviously. So revenue two hundred and seventy-five in the two, two thousand seven hundred and fifty minus fourteen hundred is equal to one thousand three hundred and fifty. One thousand three hundred and fifty multiplied by thirty percent should give us four hundred and five. Okay, I'm assuming you can do basic arithmetic. But I'm showing you the procedure so that you know how to do it on the exam. And now that we have four hundred and five being our answer, let's do the work. Let's do the journal entry. Seriously, all of this to write debit income tax expense equaling to four hundred and five. And then credit income tax payable equaling to four hundred and five. And that's how you'll do your journal entries. Okay. Now we gotta do chapter, a different chapter. But I might as well explain adjustments really quickly. Because I think it'll help. Here we have a deferral adjustment. What the hell? I don't know why my screen shook like that. Add adjustment. So a deferral adjustment is an expense or revenue that has been deferred. And deferred equals cash now. If we have postponed reporting it on the income statement until a later period. So to demonstrate it, let's say we September first. We get cash paid for rent in advanced. And then let's say we use up rent benefits. And then finally on September thirty. We'll say adjustment needed. Because guess what? All of the rent has been paid, but it's a new month now, so we need rent again. And it goes in this direction. So let's say we have a deliver subscription service or just like Netflix or Hulu or something. So. In other words. Let's use a different example. Because the more examples we have, the more you'll understand this. September first, oops. As opposed to September thirtieth. Yeah, let's say we have a Hulu subscription service. So we'll have cash received in advance for subscription. And after we use our month, so we pay for the month, we need an adjustment. Pretty simple stuff, right? So this is in the deferred adjustment. But what about the other one? The other one being uh accrual, and this is how you actually spell accrual. It'll be A C C R U A L. Adjustment. I apparently can't spell adjustment. There we go, adjustment. So an accrual adjustment are needed when a company has earned the revenue or incurred an expense in the current period but has not recorded it yet. Because it'll receive the cash later. So the way that looks, for those of you who wanna know, September first, we incur income taxes. Then on September thirtieth. We need an adjustment. And then afterwards on December thirty first, we pay cash for income tax. And that's what it'll look like. And then let's say we wanna do something that isn't taxes because we're not depressed. Let's say we wanna do something beneficial. We'll say hmm hmm, something beneficial. Oh. Earned interest, so something that makes us money. Earned interest. This means that we will need cash received. Not paid, received. For interest. Cool. Now you know how to do those. So now let's look at the next problem he wants to do. This is more preparing the journal entries. And like always, this stuff takes forever. Why does this take forever? Because the professor said so. Okay. Let's embrace this. Let me just explain what we are going to do. We are going to record ten journal entries. That's right. Not five, not six, not seven, bloody ten of them. And it starts with Barbara Jones. Who is Barbara Jones, I genuinely don't know. Maybe, let's read about the famous Barbara Jones. Open Barb's Books business on February first. You've been hired to maintain the company's financial records. The following transactions occurred in February, the first month of operations. A, received shareholders' cash contributions on February first totaling sixteen thousand dollars to form the corporation issued a thousand shares of common stock. You paid two thousand four hundred cash on February second for these three months rent for office space. We're gonna remove the tip because we know for a fact that the exam, well we don't know for, but usually exam won't have it. Maybe it does. Purchased and received supplies on February third for three hundred dollars cash. Signed promissory note on February fourth payable in two years deposited ten thousand dollars in the company's promissory bank in the company's bank account. E, on February fifth paid cash to buy equipment for two thousand five hundred and land for seven thousand five hundred. F, place an advertisement or advertisement if you watch that movie in the local paper on February sixth for four hundred and twenty five dollars cash. G, recorded sales on February seventh totaling eighteen hundred dollars. Fifteen twenty five was in cash and the rest on accounts receivable. H, collected accounts receivable for fifty dollars from customers on February eighth. I, on February ninth repaired one of the computers for a hundred and twenty dollars cash. Let's remove tip. And J, incurred and paid employees wages on February twentieth of four hundred and twenty dollars. So what exactly is this asking us to do? It's asking us to prepare a journal entries for all of these. Yay. So a contribution. Totaling sixteen hundred to form a corporation, cash contributions corporation issued ten thousand shares of common stock, okay? So A is gonna be really easy, it'll be debit. Cash. Uh for sixteen thousand dollars. Muha ha. Even, even alive they're separate. That's a bad joke. I hope you guys actually watched this, otherwise this makes no sense. Why would I do this one? Credit. Common stock. And it'll be sixteen thousand dollars, yay. Then for B, what are we looking at for B? Let's check. Paid twenty four hundred cash on February second for three months rest of office, okay? So we'll debit. Uh prepaid rent. And we'll credit cash. And the prepaid rent was how much? Twenty four hundred dollars. Excellent. C. Purchased and received supplies on February third for three hundred cash, okay, so it'll be debit. Supplies. Credit. Cash. It'll be, how much did we buy? Three hundred. Then we need to go for D. Signed a promissory note on February fourth payable in two years deposited ten thousand into company's bank account, okay, okay. So we're depositing ten thousand cash, so debit. Cash, ten thousand dollars. And then hmm credit. Notes payable. And this will be long term. For ten K. E. On February fifth, you paid cash to buy equipment for two thousand five hundred and land for seven thousand five hundred, so equipment, that was bad. So it's a case of debit. Debit. Land. Equipment. Credit. Cash. Paid cash to buy this and this. Land is two thousand five hundred. Equipment is seven thousand five hundred. And our credit for cash will be ten thousand dollars. Cool, very cool indeed guys. Chao cool. F. Place an advertisement in the local newspaper for February sixth for two four hundred and twenty five cash. Did I read the advertisement in the newspaper? Why yes. I really hope people know where that's from, otherwise I just sound weird. For a four hundred and twenty five cash, so in other words, it'll be advertisement expense. And this will be a debit. And we're going to credit cash. So this will be four hundred and twenty five. And cash will be four hundred and twenty five as well. I'm going to rewrite that because it looks hideous. Come on. We know what to do. Let's just think this one through. So we debit. Advertize meant expense. And we're going to credit cash. Four hundred and twenty five dollars, four hundred and twenty five dollars. So far so good, this is going extremely well guys, this is going extremely well. E F G. What's G? Records sales on February totaling eighteen hundred dollars, fifteen hundred was in cash. And the rest on accounts receivable, okay. So we know debit. Cash. Debit. Accounts receivable. And we're going to credit. What are we crediting? Sales revenue, I think it's sales revenue, yeah. And the cash will be fifteen twenty five, sales revenue is eighteen hundred. And accounts receivable will be two hundred and seventy five dollars. So far so good, this is going exactly as I thought it would. Yep. I have not doubted for a second that this is exactly what I meant to write down. So next, we need to write the following reports, so since we're on G. At this point after G, we have H, I and J. So we're almost done with this one, very simple one as well. Kinda wish we had more of these, but oh well. Come on erase, erase, thank you. So J. Says, just a G, so we need to do eight, we need to do H. Collected accounts receivable fifty dollars from customer on February. So in other words. H. Will be cash. Fifty dollars. Accounts receivable fifty dollars. Oh, no, 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 that's right, that's right, that's right, okay, H is right. Then we have to go to I. And obviously this is debit. And this is credit. So then I is going to be even better, I is on February ninth repaired one of the computers for a hundred and twenty dollars cash. So repair expense. This will be debit. And we credit cash. How much? A hundred and twenty dollars. And then the last journal entry. Incurred and paid employee wages on February twenty eighth, four twenty. So. Wage expense. Debit, credit. Versus wage. Oops. We, how do we pay the expense? We pay the expense with cash, obviously. So the wage expense is four hundred and twenty and the cash is four hundred and twenty. That is all of your journal entries for this one. This is going extremely well. And then finally. We need to do this one, let me pull it up. This is chapter one stuff, thankfully. Okay, so it's C I P one dash three. Oh no. So it's parts one and two, the income statement. And the balance sheet, okay. Oh my goodness, okay. Well. I mean. We're gonna be doing this for a while. Let's get comfortable, right? C P one dash three, parts one and two, prepare an income statement, prepare a statement of retained earnings. This is an income statement. And here's a statement of retained earnings, okay. So now that I've probably rambled on, let's get back to work. First, take a look at this. And then. Let's get to work. Garmin Limited reported the following information for the six month period ended June twenty nine, twenty nineteen. Items are listed alphabetically and are in thousands of dollars, here are your numbers. Other cash flow information, here are your numbers. Prepare an income statement for the six months ended June twenty nine, twenty nineteen, enter your answer in thousands. So, what is in an income statement per se? So first, let's write it out. Garmin Limited. What's next after Garmin Limited? Well, you see, we need to write what kind of statements, this is an income statement. And then afterwards, what is this income statement for? It is for six months. Ended June twenty nine, twenty nineteen. Cool. So up next, in the thousands. And all of these are separate lines. If I could draw a straight line, I would. But they're all separate lines. So first, we need to have our revenues. So what are our revenues? Well, we have our sales revenue. Versus everything else here. So what exactly is in our sales revenue? Well, our sales revenue is literally stated here somewhere. Now seeable. Sales revenue right here, one million seven hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Whoa. And this will make our total revenue equal to one million seven hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Then we have our expenses. Our expenses go as followed. Operating expense. And then the other expense is an advertisement expense. Where did I get this from? From here. Here. So our operating expense is six hundred and ninety three thousand. Is six hundred and ninety-three thousand. And our advertisement expense. Is sixty-nine thousand. And then we have more, we have the office expense. Which is going to be. Six hundred and fifty-six thousand. Then. We have our income tax expense. And our income tax expense. Is up here being seventy-eight thousand dollars. Cool. So for the total expense. It'll be. The sum of all of this, which is equal to. One million four hundred and ninety-six. Thousand. So we need to get our net income. Our net income is going to be total revenue. Minus. Total expense. Okay. And that'll give us. Two hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars. Pretty cool, pretty cool indeed. That's how you will make your income statement. And then the next thing it wants us to make. Is the prepare statement of retained earnings. So to prepare a statement of retained earnings. It's actually a lot simpler. So I'm gonna give you guys a second to like print screens so that you can see this or take a photo. You have it? Good, because I'm assuming you memorized it or wrote it down. So to get a statement. Of retained earnings. For. Six months. Let's actually write the whole thing. So first things first, we have. Garmin Limited. And it'll be statement. Of. Retained earnings. And these are all separated by lines, obviously. We will have four. Six. Months. Ended. June. Twenty-nine. Twenty nineteen. And then for the sake of clarity, this is. In thousands. And this is in a parentheses for some reason. Now let's close this. So first, we need to have our retained. Earnings. And we know from the previous, the previous one. That our retained earnings were. The following. Two million. Oh, right. Should probably show that, right? I probably should. Retained earnings are here, two million seven hundred and twenty-five thousand. Cool. Then we will add. Our net income. Which we calculated to be. Two hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars. And then finally, we less our dividends. So where do we get this number from, our dividends? Well, our dividends are actually from the question itself. Three hundred and nine thousand. But since we're lessing, it's negative. So what this tells us. Is that our. Forgot I could move it with the. I really did forget that, okay. Forgot I could just move it with the mouse, okay. What this tells us is that our. Retained. Earnings. For June. Twenty-nine. Twenty nineteen. Are two million. Six hundred and forty thousand dollars. And that is how you make a statement of. Retained earnings. That's how you do it. And then, you know, if you want to make the balance sheet, go for it, or if you want to make the income statement again, go for it. But for the most part, that's how you do it all. So if you're just here for the. For the exam questions, you now have them. For those of you who actually want all the practice, see me in the next video.